Park Heights City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 12th to order first is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Just have a couple extra words to add to item Q under consent agenda is with staff adjustments. Any other changes for agenda?
Move the consent or move the agendas as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is council staff reports. As we had this Senate bonding tour here about a week ago. Friday is the XL fourth quarter meeting and that should be here at City Hall. And then on the 20th, I have a Lake Elmo Airport chair meeting on Zoom and that's all I have for the month, which is good. Councilmember Doherty.
Yeah, the Park and Trails meeting for this month has been canceled and trying to attend the meeting on Friday, the XL meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
I participated in the annual gingerbread contest, this Councilmember Doherty, and I have a watershed meeting on Thursday.
Thank you. Councilmember Liljagren.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Runk.
I was at the gingerbread thing, as was Councilman Liljagren, he didn't mention it, and I have a CBB tomorrow.
Thank you. Staff reports. Administrator Wright.
Mayor, Council, I guess since it's been brought up, I figured it would make sense to show a slide here, a picture of the gingerbread competition that we were, we were all a part of. So that was, as was mentioned here this weekend, so a pretty productive group, I must say. So Autumn Hills Park, we've got a little Public Works vehicle there in the front, too, and shelter, swing set, you name it. So hopefully we can drag it over here for our residents to see in the lobby, but that remains to be seen. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Chief Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick updates for community outreach. We are participating, we wrapped up the Toys for Tots, so thank you everyone that participated with that. And then we have our Shop with a Cop event that's occurring tonight and tomorrow night up at Walmart. And then hiring update pending approval tonight on the extended agenda, our new officer will start next Monday. And then we have second officer, there was a job offer made today pending, he's got a few more hoops to get through and they'll bring that to a later council meeting, so that will be replacing a retiring Sergeant Croft. That's it.
Can you do the reminder about winter parking?
Winter parking is in effect, as much as it doesn't look like it's going to snow out there, but we are still putting the reminders on the cars throughout the night. There is no, we have no parking up until spring, so we're asking all residents, and so far they've been pretty good about it, but we've also been trying to educate and put those reminders when needed, but we, so far we haven't had the snow or any issues yet either. So that's good, too. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Next is visitor public comment section. This is time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council. All right. Oh, Jen, sorry.
That's okay.
Mrs. Administrator Pinsky.
Mayor, Council, I just have one thing for you tonight. Clark and Vicki Nimer at 1456657 Street North, they were chosen as the most recent recycling award winner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now it's visitor public comment section. This is time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on any item. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, and this is going to be wordy. Approved bills and investments, check seven, seventy, seven zero zero seven three through seven zero one three zero for 321,576 dollars and 23 cents. Approved City Council minutes for December 28th, 2023. Approved resolution authorizing receipt of donation and directing the donation be used for Shop with a Cop event. Approved the appointment of a full-time new hire police officer. Adopt resolution for 2024 liquor tobacco amusement and cannabinoid license renewals. Approved 2024 taxi licenses for FDS Enterprises doing businesses a taxi. Approved resolution designating the polling location for 2024 elections in the city of Oak Park Heights. Approval memorandum of understanding for voter account fund allocation to the city of Oak Park Heights. Approved 2024 area charge for connection to water sewer and storm sewer. Approved 2024 engineering rates. Approved 2024 legal services rates. Approved 2024 planning services rates. Approved 2024 home occupation permits. Approved salary adjustment for nonrepresented employees. Approved Redcat and Company auditing services for a year ending December 31st, 2023. Approved release of temporary construction easements. Approved security screening fencing at Northern Natural Gas Substation, 55th Street and Oak Green Avenue North with staff adjustments. Approved resolution for certification of delinquent utility bills. Approved resolution designated 2024 checking and banking depositories. Approved resolution for closure of the TIFF number three Oak Green five. Approved resolution for the closure of fiscal recovery ARPA funds and related transfer of funds remaining. Approved resolution adjusted 2023 budget and approve earned sick and safe time employment policy. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Johnson. Jacob.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljagren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. First is the truth and taxation hearing for the 2024 budget presentation. Betty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have our 2024 budget hearing tonight. I'll try to summarize the budget for the public. If anybody's got questions, please ask, and I will try to my best to answer them. So if we want to put up the overhead, okay, so here's the 2024 Truth and Taxation Budget Meeting to be held today, December 12th, 23. So first of all, I want to refer to the budget in many categories, and so within those categories, I'll kind of explain. I'm going to take my time tonight, too, because this might be my last budget hearing, so just bear with me.
Preferably before midnight.
Okay. So in the categories of general government, we have mayor and council, administration of finance expenses, planning, zoning, engineering, and insurance. With public safety, we have police protection, we have fire, we have building inspection, animal control and emergency management. Public Works takes care of street management, our street maintenance, snow removal, street lighting and signs, tree removal and sanitation, parks and recreation, and then we have capital improvements, which is our street maintenance program. That includes our seal coating and our melon overlay, our storm sewer replacement, our equipment and vehicle replacement, and our parks, building, and equipment replacements. So for 2024 budget, I'm talking to the general fund in all these categories. I have broken down what the expenditures look like from the 23 budget to the 24 budget. On the 24 budget, we're looking at a total of $7,348,000. I rounded to the zeros or to the thousands on this. And so compared to the 23 budget, that's a $505,000 increase. I'll explain the increases in more detail later. You can see in the pie which ones are the biggest users or the biggest amount of our budget. We have public safety and general government, capital improvement. But in general government, our increase was $119,000. A lot of this is of $119,000, $51,000 of that is in these transition expenses, because we will be getting a new finance director next year and because we have a new city administrator, we have some expenses that are going to be incurred one time. It wouldn't be prudent to raise the taxes for those one times expenses, but we'll use the fund balance for those. So yeah, then that increase and then in the general government is about $68,000. Public safety, that's only a $78,000 increase. That's basically a 3% increase. That's basically what they have in wages, and so that's a very tight budget for them this year. They came in very, very prudent. Public Works is a $71,000 increase. Parks and Rec only a $7,000 increase. And our sanitation is quite a bigger expense that actual compared to what we had estimated is about $57,000 more. So in our operating expenses, we're increasing $332,000 compared to 23. Our transfers for our improvements, this is where we put money away for the purchase of our trucks, our vehicles, our melon overlay, seal coating, all of the long-term expenses, and by doing so, we avoid issuing bonds and paying interest on this. Saves quite a bit of money for the taxpayers by doing this on an annual basis and avoiding bond issuance. We have a crease of $111,000, as I'll explain later. Most of that is coming into a program that we're going to be upgrading our trails and fixing those, and that's additional $80,000 of that $110,000, like $111,000 increase. Our transfers for our debt, we levy our taxes for our debt in the general fund, and then we transfer them out to the debt fund. We have $575,000. We will have that till 2028. It's a level that won't change at this point, and after 2028, we'll have no debt. And then one of the new revenues that we received in, or that we're expected to receive in 2024 is local government aid. A lot of surrounding cities here will get a lot of money, you know, 400,000, 500,000, 700,000, and they've been getting that for years, since the 60s, basically. The city of Oak Park Heights has never received any local government aid. We're expected to get about 65,000 next year. With that, I had advised council that we really shouldn't plan on that money being there. It's not significant at this time, but if the state doesn't commit to it, I'm not sure that you'll have it every year. We'd like to see that it would grow, so that would help with our transition aid from the King Plant. And so at this time, I'm recommending that we put that into fund balance, utilize it for transition aid, utilize it should we lose our property taxes or that we have to pay back in abatements. So at this point, that's where I'm suggesting that we put that. So now we can talk about revenues. So our revenues for this budget, 91% of our budget is supported with tax revenue. So for our taxes, our property taxes, it's proposing a $6,677,000 tax levy this year. That's a $340,000 increase. Our other taxes, our pilot taxes, that's where we pay payment in lieu of taxes. Some tax exempt properties pay the city tax based on their tax value outside of what the county gives us. So that's an additional rubber to the city. We have business licenses and permits, those are alcohol, those type of permits. We have a little increase there because I think of the cannabinoids, and so we'll have that for maybe one year. We have non-business license, our building permits, they're expected to go down. We had quite a big development with the TCO, I think, and so we're not expecting those to be quite as heavy for '24. Fines and forfeits, no changes. Intergovernmental revenue, we show the $84,000 increase. Basically, that's that $65,000 of the local government aid and some increase in police funding. Charges for services, basically no change. Misleadingness revenues, those are actually billbacks that we do for the police department. If our officers are utilized in situations, whether they're extra security, we bill back also for the school. We bill back there. With that, we have a total revenue of 7,400 or 348,000 with a $500,000 increase. So summary of changes. Now, this is more in the detail, and I probably won't hit every one of these lines, but just to give you an idea of the changes in revenues, we had the changes in the pilot taxes, like I had explained, and a decrease in the building permits of like $21,000. We had police aid, we have $18,000 of additional funding, and local government aid, we have the $66,000. The billback is $38,000, an increase from '23. So we're looking at a total of changes in revenues of $165,000 more than we had in the '23 budget. Our changes in expenses. So one of our big, big changes is the salaries contractual related taxes and the benefits. So in 2023, we adopted the budget based on what we thought we would settle the union contracts with. 2023, all the contracts were open and they did not settle at the amount that we had budgeted for. So when you see that larger increase, it's basically, it's a budget comparison, however, '23 really is not reflecting what the actual costs were. So that looks a little bit, it looks like it's an inflated cost, but this one really is based on our budget and our union contracts for 2024. We had an increase in overtime hours, and those, a lot of them are the billback hours that I talked about. And then we have the two yellow things. Those are the duplicate expenses that we'll have that are one-time expense, and they're going to be funded by the fund balance. So that's the duplicate finance director wages and consulting and legal plans and planner for the transitioning of, to a new city administrator and getting up on, into helping him get through all the changes that have been going on. Then we have other major ones, the snow plowing. So our snow plowing expenses have been running quite high. We budgeted $200,000 in '23, but we're budgeting $250,000 in '24, and hopefully so far, with enough of the snow, we might make some good advances in that. We have a fire. Our fire contract will actually go down this year because it's based on average runs. Our average runs have gone down over the last three years, so we have seen a savings in our fire contract. And then in sanitation, sanitation is $58,000 and then supplies is $5,000. Our insurances have not gone up enough, a lot, but general insurance and workman's comp is showing a $12,000 increase for the city, which is not a significant amount. And the bigger part of this is the transfers for our capital purchasing. We have street and storm sewer renewals, up $11,000, trail equipment $10,000, and the trail maintenance up $130,000. What we're doing there is we're taking money from the seal coating program because we have significant funding there, and we're moving it towards the trail maintenance, and then that way it's only an $80,000 increase between the two of them. The local government aid listed there is listed as we're going to put it into fund balance and utilize it in that sense. So with the next one, we have a proposed tax levy to fund our budget. So the proposed tax levy for '24 is $6,676,680. That's $339,420 more than '23. It's a 5.3% increase. As you can see, the capital improvement increases there of 8%, and our operations is 5%. Oh, how did that get in there? Who has a favorite slide?
I knew that was coming.
You knew it was coming. Oh, I don't know how that got in there. Please move on. Thank you.
You had more than last year.
I warned you. I did. So where do the taxes go? So if you want to look at this instead of the percentages, you can say this is a $1 bill, and it can explain, like at 33 cents of that $1 bill goes to public safety. So every dollar of taxes, 33 cents of it will go to public safety. Seven cents of it goes to Public Works. General government is 25 cents. Parks and Rec is 3%, and capital improvement is 20%. Sanitation is 5%, and our debt is at 8%. So, so we take their tax levy and we spread it over the values, and this is where it affects all the taxpayers and how their tax statements come out. So our final values for 2024 aren't available until February 2024. So the information that's on the truth and taxation, the information that I'm giving tonight is based on estimates. So the county estimates are given to us and they're averages. So some people have had higher, some people have had lower, but on the average, our total tax capacity increased 11.9% for the city. And that's made up of residential increases of 10%, commercial increases of 16.1%, and public utilities is estimated as 0% in those values that the county used. Our values have come in for the public utilities, and the actual values are 6% less than what's used at the county at this time. So again, the truth and taxation, for the past few years, you've received a letter from the city explaining what that adjustment is. So our truth and taxation is based on the county values, does not reflect that 6% decrease in public utilities. So that reduction in tax capacity for the city is $300,000, just that 6% drop. And then what it will do on the truth and taxation notices, it says there's a 48.17% tax rate, but our real tax rate based on the new adjusted values would be 49%. So that's a 2.3% change in the person's tax. So who pays this? So the city of Oak Park Heights is quite unique. It has basically three divisions that pay the taxes almost on an equal basis. We have the residential property, commercial property, and public utility. All other is personal property taxes. So I put up here 2023's, what the share was of public utility and what '24's share of public utility is. As you can see, the drop has gone from $32 for each $100 down to $29 for '24. So of the $100 that's paid, $29 is paid by our public utilities. $31 is paid by commercial. Residential pays $39. So you can see the shift has gone from the residential being lower to the residential being higher, public utility going down, and so, and then the other is $1. So that's how $100 is spread throughout the city, basically one-third to each of the So what does that mean for a person in a residential home in Oak Park Heights? So because the values increased in Oak Park Heights, if we kept the tax levy exactly the same as last year, you would still see a 6% increase in your taxes for the city because on average, with the 10% increase in your value, it amounts to be about 6% increase. So with that in mind, I broke out the components of the increases that we're expecting. So I have the one highlighted, it's 333,000. The county says that's the median home in Oak Park Heights, that's the value of the median home. So basically, in 2023, your house was valued at 300,000, and 2024, your house is valued at 333,000. So in '23, your actual taxes was $1,433. In '24, we're looking at $1,605 based on our tax levy and based on your change in value. So that's a $172 increase. That increase is made up of $82 just because your value increased, and then $90 because of the budget increase. So all in all, it's an average of a 12% increase, almost 6% due to value, 6% due to budget. So in summary, we have a 2024 budget expenditure increase of $505,380. It's a 7.39% increase. Our '24 budget revenues, other than taxes, are increasing $114,900, and we're using fund balance for transitioning expenses of $51,000. So our total '23 budget is $7,348,640. Our tax levy is $6,676,680. It's an increase of $339,420 or a 5.36% increase. Our property values are shifting to residential because of residential going up 10%, public utility going down 6%, commercial going up 16%. So an overall increase in residential taxes on average is going to be a 12% as reflected on your truth and taxation notices. So I think that's it. If there's any questions?
Any questions for Betty?
Well explained.
Yeah, Betty?
Well, thank you.
Thank you for 13 years.
You should stay. You said it may be your last meeting. Consider it staying.
Well, thank you for the 13 years and your consistent, really wonderful job that you've done on every single one of your budgets.
Thank you, and thank you for working with me on these budgets. It's been, it's been really easy and helpful, and you guys have been really great to work with, so I appreciate it all.
Thank you. All right. So I'll open the public hearing. And there's nobody here, so.
Nobody, Kate?
She's delighted to see you. She did an awesome job. There's no questions to ask.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Liljagren. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
We'll move that down next. We'll wait, it's coming down.
Yep.
Okay. Then I'll open the public hearing to consider issuing some license to allow sales of cannabinoid products and related devices at Tobacco and vape company. Jennifer.
Mayor and Council, Tobacco and Vape Co. made an application for sales of cannabinoid products and devices at Oak Tobacco and Vape located at 14661 60th Street North. Background investigation has been completed by the police department and the city's attorney's office. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Stillwater Gazette, posted at City Hall, and mailed to other licensed holders within the city. No public, no written comments have been received. The applicant was invited. He's not here. He missed Betty's presentation. Staff recommends approval. After, after a few follow-up questions following the investigation, staff does recommend approval of the license.
Any questions for Jennifer? Is there a motion? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I was going to make a motion. I wasn't sure if you'd opened it yet.
Yeah, I opened it and closed it. Motion to close the public hearing. So by Councilmember Runk, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Is there a motion to approve the license?
So moved. We need to vote on whether or not we close the meeting.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, and then is there a motion to approve the license?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Liljagren. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have no old business tonight, so we'll move on to new business, which is the resolution approving the 2024 budget.
So moved.
Did you want to hear it, Betty? Did you want to hear Betty?
Just want to say that I, budget, this resolution is based on the budget that's just presented. It's for a total budget of $7,348,640.
Thank you.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Jacob.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljegren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. And next is the resolution approving the 2024 tax levy. Betty.
And with that budget that was presented, the recommended tax levy is $6,667,680. It represents a 5.3% increase. With that, we also, loss of words, we also canceled the debt. That is a scheduled debt because we do levy for the debt in the general fund and transfer it to the debt funds. This is just a formality. The debt is still being paid, but we do cancel them officially in the resolution. So I just want to make council aware of that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Doherty. Jacob.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljegren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. Next is adopt amended City Code 102 master fee schedule. Jennifer.
Mayor and Council, each year, the city council does look at all of the changes that have occurred throughout the year with fee changes, one of them happening this evening just with the area connection charges, and just makes an adoption to approve those changes in a formal format for our master fee schedule. So I'm just recommending approval of that this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Jennifer? Is there a motion to approve the schedule?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Runk. Jacob.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljegren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. Are there any other council items or announcements?
I got a couple of questions. One would, Jenny, when we approved the licenses, did we have any that didn't reapply this year?
We did. The VFW held a club license for a number of years, and they have informed me that they are closing and they are not applying for a new license, so we've lost the VFW as a license holder. That is the only one.
Okay, so we don't.
Thank you.
And the other question I have is, can you contact the county again about the signs they were supposed to put up for the frontage road? They'd agreed for the south frontage road they were going to put on.
For business access this?
Yeah.
That started quite a few months ago.
Right, and I think we've actually reminded them once already on that.
We've reminded them about a lot of things.
Yeah, Councilmember Runk, I'm not specifically aware of that, but I can connect with staff on that.
South frontage road on, oh, that's good.
Okay.
Right by the smoke shop.
Right.
Stogies.
We need signs like they have on the north side.
Anything else? I'd like to wish everybody a happy.
One thing, Mr. Runk reminded me, if you could also, when talking to the county, by the Holiday Station, the trail crosses the frontage road, which is a county road, and we've asked them before about making that hashtagged with, or hashed with a crosswalk. I had one of my employees that walks home got hit there last month, and I'd like to start that conversation again with them.
Yep, absolutely.
And can we please ask them again to put the double-turn lane in on Oscar?
And that one, I have asked about that one, yep.
Any more requests for the county?
I started.
I'm not going to give up on that one.
I just went over a page.
Okay.
Got them listed.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say happy holidays to everybody, and hopefully we stay healthy and safe and enjoyable holidays. Now we can adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Doherty.